Nope, Gov.
It's a hand she tried to curl. Been that way since she was a child. She's.
Does she have a? Physical disability?
All day long. It looks to me like it's twenty year old. He just wanders around.
We don't have, uh, it's not. We are ready.
Okay, it is six P M. We'd like to call the city council board. And, uh, Kenny, would you do a call? I mean, Kansas.
One of us.
Here. Here. Here.
Yes.
Very interesting.
Here.
Bill.
Here.
Thank you. I'll get coming. I shouldn't ask that after we all leave. Uh, we'd like to have a flight ceremony in Kansas.
Lots of land is going to be taken.
Complete this event and after which Margie Anderson will give us a little.
Go on, Bryce.
Well, in gracious, we thought they're grateful for this opportunity. We're grateful that you know this community. Thankful for all those who served in any way to make our city better. Help us to finally to be able to determine what's the best course of action for things that happen in that we might have an appreciation for them being on the council and the to serve. We are grateful for this country and for our nation, national leaders, please bless them, bless our state leaders as well as those in our surround community. Again, thank you for all blessings that we enjoy. Say this in the name of Jesus Christ.
There's still no poll. Um, Darren Owens is scheduled to, Senator Darren is scheduled to do a presentation, but he is running back from a meeting in Salt Lake, so we're gonna go with one B, Ms. E from twenty twenty four, end of year report. I mean, we're so excited to have you with us.
Um, I'm so excited to be here tonight and thankful that I could be here today and thankful that I could be here and see from us twenty twenty four and just so grateful for the opportunity I had to serve this past year and um, just as a summary, I was able to um, have my platform be helping habits, uh, building helping habits for life. And with that, I was able to do a five K fun run for the community in the fall time and then in the springtime, I was able to um, hold a one month healthy habits challenge and the proceeds for the five K was able to go to E from elementary school where they were able to buy more athletic equipment for their P E program. And yeah, I was just here tonight to express gratitude to our whole thankful that I could do today and I also um, have tickets for all of you and just like to let you know that the next you see from Paget is May seventeen and I have two free tickets for each one of you and hope that you all will come.
That's all for you for active following for like. I think I've always been glad for that.
Emmy, we uh, we thank you for representing you and representing everything that is good underneath. We are so appreciative of that. I know that uh, your peers at the high school look at you. They know that you're a C from. I've had two daughters laws who have been missed. They weren't received from they were dismantled. But they went on to, it's okay, they went on to then become the same county. And if that's something that you want to pursue, I don't know the time schedule for that, we still encourage you, but we just thank you for representing everything that is special and great and wonderful about you from city. So thank you. Darren, we're gonna put you right to work. If you want to come up, we had one presentation and we wanted to give you as much time as you'd like to take because we're we're concerned.
Okay. Thank you for having me and I'm just, I'm sorry I'm a few minutes late, but good to be with you. Um, the mayor actually reached out a week or so ago or two and uh, if I would come and give a little bit about energy, um, brought a little energy in this legislature has been our number one right three uh, two years, both the house and the senate. So you've seen a number of deals in legislation about um, what is the future of energy and and in the state? And the governor has just had his initiative, but in the next ten years that Utah should produce that. So what we are looking at by twenty fifty, the state needs to double its energy. That's what the room came in. Mountain power have been saying no to especially by lovely industry people, companies, and that's not the Utah that we want to have with not being able to supply that, not being able to, especially when you're the factory. State, the nation and population. Part of this is not just, uh, well, I think it's been coming for a while, but the one direction is of the state, other states have their coal infrastructure prematurely, in my opinion, and I think most of the legislature opinion. Um, just because of various policies, different, different policies in the nation. Um, coal is not perfect. It's, it's the cheapest, the most reliable base load power that the world knows. So, um, and it, but it pollutes and with all of the scrubbers and everything that are available. Um, emissions of of coal is not, um, actually, and when you compare that with natural gas. There's some, in, in some way, natural gas pollutes more than coal, so that's the dilemma we find ourselves in as a state and I think you do as a city. Um, I want to know more about your city and your infrastructure. Couple of years ago, Needville and its area, they own their own gas because when the new natural gas companies build all of their infrastructure into all the state. And for some reason, Juve County, Needville, Monona, Levan, Rocking Ridge, that was the dominant pole that they didn't feel. And so the municipalities said, look at it. And they have two natural gas lines to feed that county. Uh, but they were and the growth in Juve County won't about that. You start to see it in Sandy County. They wanted to go to assess impact fees. And so we went to the legislature, responsible legislature into file that. And I will tell you, it was a fight with me with the association lobbyists because they didn't want the word impact fees. Uh, Christmas tree and other fee. But in reality, if you don't have that fee to the new people who are moving there, the new home owners, and you can't assess that, then all of the problems on the backs of the people who lived there. So once we were able to show, look, this, we showed the map of the state and it's unique. This is a small, low geographical area who is rare. They own their own gas company. And they need to be able to assess an impact fee. We're able to get that passed. You sit in a similar place as a city where you can, you need to be able to pass on those to the loading new constituents who are having demand. I know you have had some challenges with energy, especially natural gas costs and fighting. The whole country has, they're not alone in that. Um, but I, I would like to find out more and maybe you can tell me in a hurry. In your city, do you provide energy for anybody outside of your? Any others? We do. Um, when do you have large load providers or requests coming in? What multiple more now in data center for the large cities? They want the data, data center. They need one. So I think you need to take a good look at that and see what is coming. And we've passed, uh, this is right here. I think it would just be one thirty, Senator Sandel passed the large load bill that says if you have large load demand, then you can provide your own power. Now you, uh, Rocky Mountain Power has six months to respond, a first rate refusal whether they can provide that large, not be over fifty nine. I don't know if those new laws and that are coming or that then has can help your situation, but now what I'm starting to see, we are throughout the state of some of the large vote providers that people who can stand up. I met a, a bunch of them a few months ago and they have their plan is to build natural gas plants and they purchased property on the um, under the pipeline pathway. And they have access to some of that gas, but the difficult thing is getting those. But they can stand up a hundred and twenty five megawatts and and stack them. It's something that you, I would love to introduce you to. So they can put in a unit that produces a hundred and twenty five megawatts. And the man grows different in another. So they're planning on servicing data centers in Miller County area. Can't tell you exactly, but they have the property, so they're against the water issues now. They have the ability to produce up to two thousand. That's the size of I P P. That's huge.
And, and that'll be natural gas.
Yeah, it's for gas power. And so as they start to provide energy for data centers and then other manufacturing states, they plan to have a huge hub and manufacturers come in who they need out and we need them. They were part of the putting more in the, in. So them more at how close is an Indian port area to even right here within the ring? So even better, uh, someone like this company who had access to, they have, they have already on American soil these units that can produce a hundred and twenty five megawatts. They have access to those. I don't know to touch their business and that might be some as, as you're considering the future of energy, E from city. So as I look back through my notebook, almost every other page did have energy. Week ago, we heard a report and we're really glad to hear of a service commission that premiums on insurance for Rocky Mountain Power, the insurance request was twenty eight hundred percent. And they allowed four hundred percent. The world to see that reeled that in and we didn't. Washington state passed a law and this is a challenge by being in the we that Pacific or Rocky Mountain Power to go back and figure out how we can have a deal. And let the western states of Washington, California, who have different policies and use of energy, but then have their, that side of the Pacific, back to what used to be the, in the Ohio. Yeah, so we are listening there right now. Get the shot across the bow. Washington state passed a law, the, uh, a clean energy law that the demand was thirteen million dollars on Utah rate payer, none on them. But on us and then replacing some of them, have that not happen? Um, we cut their energy balancing account in half instead of they were seeking six hundred and sixty mi- million. They allowed three hundred and thirty. So there's a full report on this that you can read the synopsis on P S C websites if you're interested. It's very telling about the policies on energy just here in the West and between the states that Rocky Mountain Power, Pacific Court serves. So, um, I'm, I'm on a, the energy task force and love being part of that. I've been assigned to be the senate chair of public utilities, energy and transmission now. So starting two weeks, when we have interim, I'll be the interim chair of that with the representative Jack, who's an energy engineer, Senator Utah. So, uh, I'll learn more as the interim goes on, but for to be able to come and share a little bit of the outlook on the state of Utah, whatever our demands are within life. And it's, and you're a small microcosm of that large state, their population here demand, I'm sure you're seeing it, which probably looks a little overwhelming to you, just like it does to us. Double our energy infrastructure in twenty five years. Have to be aggressive and it's gonna take a lot of, um, investment and a lot to stay on top of it. So the goal is not to pass it on to rate payers, but if the population grow and the new energy or new manufacturing and other backs of those coming and causing some demand, not rate payers. That's been our approach. Sure, what else to share? Be, be asked any questions or maybe? Please, Darren.
Answer. Any questions, councilor groups have that energy or pouring? If you think the subject for you too, because I've invited, stories are our help power department director. We're invited to computer.
Uh, question I have is with transmission. We're a member of U N S. And that's our biggest challenge is trying to get transmission through the document queue and things that way. There's any, anything in the state or the senate could, you know?
Yeah.
Some service can try to get that transmission moving forward. Because that's our biggest challenge after all, but with the projects that we're involved in, that we're trying to build. Obviously, we're, we're gonna build the, the peak by now in the wood count. Figure where that, that's been a big challenge is getting that transmission through that talking about queue to move forwards.
You, um, that I'm sure in large part just because of all the regulation, yeah. The same thing. So just last week, the governor had his he, he invited the Wyoming. And I have. Always when it comes to transmission is the key here. I guess I should report also that the state of Utah now, starting July second, have the option to just in, uh, hopefully that will come with, we know that there are transmission issues. Uh, ironically, there are no transmission issues from I P P South at all. There's a massive amount of they, they can handle nuclear. They are looking at. Now they just. Yeah, energy solution to look at the I P P site as a possible nuclear site. Because they aren't going to build that out. And, but we're about from a I P P back. And Mona is the grocery store energy in the state. By the way, that they never have talked about, but we could transition that energy back from that point. So what stands now, the House Bill seventy to pass this session is, uh, we created an energy council and this is a long answer to your question, but this is where the decision that I made. We created an energy council that, uh, in essence will still having that plant torn down and losing nineteen hundred kilowatt of energy capacity. Put longer life on those coal users and the whole miners and mining industry and everybody else. And it's a bridge to nuclear. But we do know we need to transmission back in the middle of the city. How is, what are you, uh, seeking? What transmission request are you making that you're struggling with?
Uh, if I, so a lot of these projects, one to two hundred and fifty one. I took a couple of the substation talking on transmission.
Yeah.
Challenge that way. So even as well. We started stuff there. It's just, I, I think the biggest challenge for you, some municipalities getting it through again and going quicker, I guess, even though things are just so slow and with the Rocky Mountain power side. If we could just speed that up a little bit, I think our projects would go a lot smoother and quicker.
I hear you and we hear you. In fact, that's one of the reasons why Senator Sandel ran that bill. All state COVID were at the table. Um, that's the frustration, right? That regulation that its government regulations and stacked on top of regulation. Uh, ran a bill this year that said if you want to build transmission, so there it looks strange. We have energy corridors and we live in a seventy thirty state, seventy percent federal control. And there is energy corridors within that federal property. But I'll do a new transmission line. Some of the companies are just going right across our ranches. Why? Just exactly why you, because it's cheaper and faster to deal with lawsuits and use eminent domain than to glue down the energy corridor already exists and get just from federal. On federal land, it's already. Yeah. So now we, we hear you and I hey, you can build Rocky Mountain if you're gonna say no, you can build your own and, and circumvent it. I hope that that is.
Yeah, I hear that. There were a lot of, sometimes when I was listening to the session, that there are a lot of transmission lines across farms and personal property here in Sandy County.
Yeah, so this came to me from a branch here, the plot before with Rocky Mountain about and, and they just were in movement. And that's where the truth came out and they said, yes, we know there are energy corridors, but we can't get permits from the federal government, but we'll go across private land. We have thirty percent of our stated, right? So I ran a bill that made it a little more difficult to do that. And so you have to look at those borders first. And if you have the money to fight them, you'll win. But if you don't, it's a habit and then you're gonna get run. And I'm not okay with that. The bill was successful, but it had lots of angst and some of the angst ironically were lawmakers who said exactly it is, we, you're taking your shit down to the shit. Then let's start at the core. It's regulations, but we can speed that up. So you can serve your people, not, um, taking private property.
You think in the current world, nationwide, that that's, that some of those regulations could be relaxed?
They're so just even with nuclear that we can have the discussion now. They're, they're so open. Then just even have that discussion and say, well, whatever, project, you're at least fifteen years in funding. And the nuclear now, if you look at time test, it is safer than wind and solar. So, um, we need to educate the, our public about that. And I'm really intrigued by a new, this, when I visited the National Lab named Imperial. And this was President Trump's energy advisor during his first term in twenty sixteen seventeen at the White House. They have a company now that takes spent nuclear fuel and they recycle it. I didn't notice, but spent nuclear fuel is only four percent spent. Ninety six percent of light, if you can, if you know how to mechanically and extract it, you can make that energy, you can use the rest of that. There's still about four percent left at the very end. And their, uh, plan is to bury that twenty thousand feet in the ground and it's, it nuclear waste, uh, a huge environmental issue is solved. So that's another thing that I think you'll see coming and I hope Utah will land that. All mapped out, but his legislature wouldn't pass it against nuclear and
It sure fills people with fear. It shouldn't in this day and age.
Yeah, look at the data. Yeah, data, good data drives good decisions. There's so much in the energy space and glad you have understands that and has their eye on that every day of the week because that's how big it is. You can't miss, you can't swing and miss on this. Too much investment. You saw the spike in just a few months, but just come to your budget upside down. So we all need to get it right together. Use and help navigate that in the legislature.
Questions, councilman? I have some questions, Senator.
Before. Um. Some softball.
Well, he's lazy for you, but. And, and some of it is, I just. Want to make sure that we understand it. So by twenty fifty. Not only the state of Utah, but in the entire nation, we will need to double our, our energy output. Is that? Is that what I heard you say?
Um, no, I'm referring to the state of Utah.
Okay.
So I'm about the nation, but the state of Utah needs to double its. Ten years ago, and we're in an energy rich state.
Yeah.
Two years ago was the first time that we had to import energy. That's not a good place to be here. Rich in minerals, export, so we have been with our economy, start importing.
Why is that?
Well, yeah, we want, we didn't have enough to, to go around in. And some of the policies of trying to rely on. Um, strictly renewable. The baseload power dried up and we, we knocked down hundreds of power plants. Coal-fired plants in the nation, and that just shrunk the ability to provide that baseload power. So now we are in. Crisis, but close to it. And you, we, we can expect like California starting to have a rolling blackout. Brownouts and people are gonna die. The, the required oxygen or? Uh, you know, you have emergency rooms that need energy from the four seven, so they're. To rethink some energy policies and Utah definitely, that's why it's number one, one year. Is so that we don't get into that, that space. And there are a lot of incentives to, by the way. To bring energy infrastructure into the state. And remove the, the regulations and. I'll read that have been difficult like transmission.
Yeah.
We see it.
This energy, uh? Increase, uh? Need is by and large being generated by A I, which is a huge. Energy consumer. And that's what you're talking about with communities bringing in A I. Based businesses that they. Now, you said that many of those communities are. Uh, they want? Them to bring their own energy, is that correct?
That's what's, that's what it's looking like now, and there's a number of, of. Different groups who. Want the R F P for Rocky Mountain power. So the state will own that land and have an energy council, but the state doesn't need to be in there because. There will be a third party to come. But plan. And provide power of that nineteen hundred megawatt. For, uh, consumes. And hopefully that keeps Utah's prices low. Um, like in. I P P, the amount of energy that that? Capacity is, that could supply enough energy for? The state, that's what we consume. So to have that plant go down and? Thinking of energy security, energy independence, no way could we do that? Without already having something in place. Otherwise, you know it's gonna happen, it's gonna be demanded.
Right.
So? Yeah, uh, it. It, I don't know what the nation's issue is, what, uh, take back to your first question, Mayor. Structure.
I, I read an article the other day that said that by? This seems astronomical to me. That by twenty twenty seven. A I will require all the energy that we currently produce. That's only in a couple of years from now.
Yeah, and it. That is then. That's such a big issue that it's a national defense issue.
Right.
We can't lose the A I race. And we're waiting on it because China controls all of the? Uh, parts and gadget.
Microchips.
So we, uh, and, and some chips out of Taiwan, so you see President Trump signing agreements with Taiwan right now to actually start building some of those chips in the state. All the critical mineral, we just, I sponsored that bill this year, took me two years to get it passed, but? If you come in and invest, it's a thirty percent. If you invest ten million dollars. Um, research and you find a critical mineral. Once you start producing, so you have to spend that in the. After the seats for, you can go back another year, get your taxes and get a thirty percent discount. So you can give it, um? Ten million, you can get three million, we have companies spending a hundred million dollars to produce. This critical mineral. And if they do that, they'll get thirty million. Credit. And that's a good deal because? We say what you say. That's a lot of money, yes, but it's money they would not have spent if you didn't put the initiative. So we're trying to incentivize the right behavior. But that's another one that's national defense because? China now is blocking down critical minerals that we can't produce. Our nuclear energy, there are only nine plants that can process uranium and be used. In the nations. And that, that's for us to survive, thank goodness we have.
Where is that from you?
It's down out with white basement, you know, in White.
They're saying the red key for, for.
Their profits improvement do. So what I'm trying to incentivize, let's say you have a plant that? Fifty years of tailings. Even the I P P plant and the issues that they have with their? Uh, coal. The, the pond, right, there's critical minerals in. So we can go down and start mining that, that's the behavior we want to incent. The tribe of witness A I risk is huge and it's a national defense issue.
Um, Jeff, that's what we do with our. City, we are, the problem with that is sell it for critical minerals. Um, you know? We're all concerned about. In the coal industry. Uh? A lot of good jobs have been lost and, and their coal has received that wrath. Um, however? Uh, this nation was built, its industrial capacity was built on the backs of cheaply generated power, coal-generated power. And we see, uh? Our, in our backyard. We see coal plants or, or mining open. Um, one of them's on fire. Can no longer produce. Uh, others are. I, what's, what's the future? I mean, China and India? Are, are completing one coal-fired power plant per week.
Yep.
And. And yet we're being handcuffed. Uh, what, what's the future here?
Self-imposed handcuffs, we put them on.
I don't.
And that's, that's the problem and we see it in Utah and hence some of our policies that seem very, uh? Archaic and right. It's common sense. And especially when it comes to baseload power. And what we're seeing though is with the A I race and these Google Meta and those large companies. Is that they're changing their religion when it comes to energy. They'll take coal power now because they'll take any power, they can't just demand that it comes from. On scores, yeah, renewable. Uh, and renewables don't produce baseload power. So? You're, you're spot on to have this as the, something that you're working in, in your camp. And then all the regulations, not what? President Obama said, I can't eliminate? Coal energy, but I can regulate it out of existence and that's what they started to do. And then that carried on. And I hope we can save them for now because? We kind of forgot about. Lowest cost energy prices in the nation. And I think there are. So I hate to live in a place that? Their policy, they pay double. That's what the A I race could, could. Require maybe thirty or four years ago, but that's not the case in waking up.
We are on the cusp, Ephraim City, I mean, we've got hydro. Uh, we've got? Several hydro plant, in fact, we've got the oldest. When, when we go on this little trip.
Yeah.
Uh, with our council retreat, we'll show you this, we've got the oldest? Hydro plant continuously working, hydro plant west of the Mississippi. Yeah. We want to show you.
You stand on the shoulder of the.
Definitely.
I'll be there with that.
Definitely.
And that's what I've tried to do. It will be years, five years ago, trying to. Keep that coal plant standing and, uh? But, and thank goodness, what we've seen out of the legislature. They actually should be building, they tore down the page plant just like that.
Yeah.
They took it and removed it as fast as they could. Dismantle it so there's no moving back. And, uh, they did what they did in a lot of states. We resisted. But? That was a producing sixty megawatts. And all of a sudden, California needed sixty megawatts, oil was built for a reason, the demand that it was built for. So you can't tear those plants down. And then expect? Magically that your policies are gonna compete to send. That's what we.
In Washington. Their proposal, serious proposal to tear down the three dams in Columbia. Uh, whi- which is seventeen percent of the Northwest's power. Um, and, 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 and so this, this? Leads to my next question, we're, we're building a mini. Um, a mini peaking plant, uh, in Ephraim, it would be natural gas. Uh, we've just completed the bonding and, and stuff for that because? These spikes are killing us as a commu- as a rural community. Um? But my next question is, is? How do you see? The, the, the capacity and the guarantee of power? Uh, in rural Utah, well, the whole state of Utah, uh, so that we do not have brownouts, blackouts. How do you see that? Are, are we gonna be okay? Or should we, as a community, prepare? Uh, more, even more aggressively?
I wish I had a magic ball. To tell you a hundred percent certain news that. I think. Now that hydro plant. What a blessing that's been to your community.
Yeah.
So would you consider taking that out?
No.
Well, that's the limited fee. About taking those off that Columbia River, they don't realize what the blessing they've had.
I've been through those dams, I'm very familiar with those dams. They're, you know.
Yeah, it's, it's the cleanest energy, there's zero pollution.
Yes.
And they've made the fish ladders and everything.
Watch them work.
Yeah, they. It makes no sense. Just have a good plan and? What you can do is, is put all you can to do it. Think they're the wisest investment. Literally, it isn't gonna be wild once for a while. Until we? Can? Build infrastructure.
Do, do you, do you foresee? That we're going to have these wild peaks again?
Uh, no, not under the current, um?
But I mean, long-term, twenty years, the next twenty years.
No idea. It's hard to say, we are trying to prepare for that right now, looking out. And incentivizing to bring enough power generation to the state so that that's not the case. We obviously weren't seeing that yet.
Okay, my last question, thank you so much for your time. My last question. Senator Owens, do you think that there is something? That maybe we ought to be doing as a city now? To forestall? A power, a lack of power? Uh, to guarantee a, a stable rate for residents, is there something that you perceive? I mean, new scale, the new scale power plant? That's being developed in, in Washington and is going to be installed? At the Intermountain or Idaho, um? Testing lab.
National lab.
National lab. That is virtually as safe as you can get with nuclear power and it'll, it'll produce? As much as you want. Very safely, you carry the, 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 uh? The radioactive beads in your pocket and you'll be okay, it, it won't harm you. You see? That type of, I, we've talked about carbon carry. Developing a small nuclear scale? Power plant over there, do you see that that's the future?
I do. That's, that's what the bridge of both coal units that are there and everything, all of the resources that come there. I think you will see those replaced with nuclear. Uh, so in comparison, what's your city population?
Four and a half million.
The city of Ephraim. So, uh, an aircraft carrier, a nuclear? Aircraft carrier have five, they have five thousand people. So very similar. When they're, they're fueled by nuclear, they come in and refuel every five years. And they move around the world on that one pure tank of nuclear. Uh, that's what's at our fingertips if we can capture it, I think we're getting there and? And? I think, I, I'm optimistic that, and I try to be all the time, I, I think we're gonna? See good things happening. Uh, we, we see that, that's why it is top of the list, it should be on yours. Um, I think we're gonna? Be okay.
Thank you so much, thank you for coming.
An honor to be with you guys, thank you.
It's an honor to have you with us.
Easy.
Thank you, Senator. Uh, but we're gonna go to. It is somewhere. With? You know, we have a responsibility to protect? Our energy supply and? Protect our residents. By providing, uh, the cheapest energy we can according. We're going to talk about this here. Um? We'll go to presentation. C, active transportation plan check-in with Bike Utah, I, Hannah Visnick? And Cameron Carter are here for that presentation. Be ready because we have some questions.
Okay, yeah, my name is Cameron Carter, I'm the city planner with Bike Utah. Um, and just so you know, Bike Utah is a nonprofit organization that works with cities and towns across the state. To address road safety issues and improve transportation needs related to walking bike. Um, we are here to present on the information plants, project we've been working on for a little bit over a year. Uh, mainly with Jordan How, the recreation director and Jill Colby, she's through with us as well, a local advocate. Uh, put it next slide. So this is just a quick timeline of the project, we started last February, we met with? Stakeholders, including several members of planning commission, uh, U dot, regional planners as well. Uh, we held a public engagement, public workout, uh, public workshop in Ephraim last June. Analysis and planning and Tanner here is going to sort of walk you through a lot of the content of and the. See. Next slide please. Uh, next slide. Um, okay, so, um, we'll also thank you all for having us here today, this plan, really excited to share these findings with you all. Um, so what is active transportation? So this is kind of one of those like darkened planner terms, but it's basically just walking and biking or any human power. Primarily those, but it could be scootering, skateboarding, things like that. Um, so the benefits, um, you know, most of these are known to y'all, um? You know, we ship people to alter, alter the most efficient within the city for these shorter trips has potential to reduce traffic congestion. Um, it's also lowers transportation costs because the cost of walking, biking is. Sitting driving, um, supports local businesses, you get more like street activation with more pedestrians in the downtown corridor. We just walked the downtown, we got here about an hour early and walked them down, there's a lot of really? Uh, amazing historical structures in your downtown, I know you all have a downtown walking tour. uh amazing historical structures in your downtown, I know you all have a downtown walking tour. Um and so like having, encouraging, having like a better space for pedestrians to walk, I think it's amazing, opportunity for the city. Um improves physical mental health, um supports social connection, really easy to talk to people when you're walking uh back and forth, passersby, I'm sure everybody in this, most populous town probably know each other, given that it's a smaller town. Um improves air quality and then preserves open spaces. Um next slide please. Um so how did we like go about designing this plan? Um well, first of all, before I go into the community engagement piece, I want to talk about like um why context of the facilities matter, like um if you read the plan before, you'll see that we, you know, pose different types of facilities in different corridors. Um the reason why we went with certain ones, has a lot to do with uh vehicle speed, um which impacts the chance of survival if pedestrian is hit by a car. So when we get up to like forty-five miles an hour, the chance of survival is pretty low, only a third. So that's why we recommend for the roads with that speed limit to have a separate facility, like you'll see multi-use paths represented in the plan. Um as the speed limit goes down, um you know, we recommend like uh more integration with, with vehicles, especially for cyclists, because we feel that, you know, you don't need the added cost of like a separated facility, they can be integrated with some, you know, additional features added to the ring. Uh next slide please. Um so community engagement, um so uh Cameron met with uh the stakeholder committee, this is prior to me joining this project. Um I joined in May and June, um we had a community workshop, this was super fun, we came down here in June last year, beautiful time of year to come down to town. We um had a bike tour, um with Jill, which is super cool, we toured around Manti, we toured around Ephraim, um kind of on the back roads to the Snow College, uh beautiful campus. Um we toured up and down Main Street, checked out some of the crossings that y'all have. Um and then we held this workshop, um we got roughly ten residents to attend, we printed out a large map with a street grid, we had people leave sticky notes on it. Um kind of draw like new comments, like, you know, this intersection is difficult for me to cross when I'm a cyclist, things like that. Um we also conducted an online survey, which we distributed through online channels through Jordan Howell. Um that was live for thirty days, we got about thirty responses, and we also met with the community, or sorry, the youth council. Um that was back in September, um we wanted to, like part of this plan, we wanted to ensure that it was designed for all ages, so we want to make sure we get youth involved since um you know, it can be harder to reach um the younger people of the community, so we, they provided some excellent feedback that we incorporated in the plan. Uh next slide. Okay, so engagement findings, um this is kind of a brief summary, fifty percent of residents walk at least twice a week. Um thirty percent bike at least twice, major obstacles are crossing Main Street is the biggest thing, people commented on and sidewalk quality on certain parts of like the uh the city grid. Next slide. Um real quickly, uh I don't want to spend a tight time on this, but this is like an infographic, it's in the packet you all received. Um it kind of goes over more of that information in detail. Um so the uh all of this community engagement went into the formulation of the community goals. Um so we, we really wanted the plan to reflect what the community was telling us. Um and so uh these are the five goals that, that came out of that engagement work. Um high quality crossings, uh provide access to key destinations in town. Um safety was a huge element of the engagement, um and the comments. Um preserve Main Street's historic character and vibrancy. Um you know, we know that the role character of this community is really important, and that was expressed through a lot of the engagements, we wanted to ensure that facilities weren't out of step with the character of the community, um and then create bike, uh pedestrian friendly community presence, and as you know, there's a lot of recreational activity in the area. Uh we met, we discussed, you know, talked to some of the Manti Trail builders, it was interesting to hear their thoughts, and that they have a micro race there. Um so a lot of recreational opportunities here, next slide. Okay, so just a brief overview of the analysis, uh please. Um so we wanted, so in addition to the engagement work, we wanted to incorporate um a quantitative analysis of um the conditions on the streets in Ephraim for uh AT users. So we just compiled, we looked at um you know, crash data, this is all on the left, all car crashes, and it's grouped by severity. Um so you know, we uh you can see, obviously, not surprisingly, most of the crashes are on the Main Street corridor. Um most are, you know, suspected minor injury or no injury, but there are a few fatal crashes there, this is over a four-year period. Then we also developed this high injury network, we wanted to outline the street segments that uh had crashes between specifically with cars and cyclists and pedestrians. Um and you can see a lot of those around the college and on the Main Street corridor. Um and then we also wanted to look at uh an average uh daily traffic. Um I mean, we, you know, we noticed that Main Street had a lot of, uh a lot of traffic on it, surprisingly, being a state or US route. Um I believe it was around twelve thousand uh ADT in twenty twenty-three. Um but we also were surprised to see how high the traffic volumes were on the Hundred North and Center Street or on College. Um and there were some, you know, decent flows on some of the outer random streets. Uh we also looked at road width, um that's kind of factored into like how likely is someone to be speeding on a road, given like how comfortable they are going faster, so that was factored into this. Um next slide. And then usefulness, so this is something called the travel shed analysis, like how easy is it to get? Um or how many places essentially can you get within a half mile and one mile walking or biking distance? Um and so we identified those Main Street and the Hundred North and Center Street as barrier roads, given that the high ADT and um the lack of crossings on some segments of that. Um and so uh we wanted to show like kind of a before and after of if some of these facilities were implemented that made it easier to, to navigate those corridors, um how much more area people would be able to access? And then that is reflected in the travel shed map and the connectivity. Slide. Uh all right, and so here are the recommendations. Um so here's the total plan, um that is uh should be in the packet for you all. Um the biggest facility on here um that we're recommending is improvement on Main Street. Um I will note that the recommendations that we have in here, um we're not we're not recommending reducing any parking, because we know that's really important for y'all. Um we also looked at the ADT volumes, and based on the federal highway guidelines, feel like the reduction of four, uh two travel lanes northbound to a three lane configuration with a center turning lane would be um would serve the current and, you know, uh future uh traffic congestion of that corridor, so which is why we proposed that improvement. Uh we also have multi-use paths, um you know, we observed that there's a lot of street frontage on these um roads, you know, like four hundred south and four hundred east, Hundred North, um so we feel like there's a lot of room for uh the installation of a multi-use path, which uh primarily serves the school kids getting down to the elementary and middle school area, having, then having a dedicated facility, we feel like would be beneficial. Um so the total length is twenty-three miles, total cost two points seven million, a lot of that is. Um so I just kind of, I just touched on this, but this would be like what the Main Street corridor would look like under that plan, with the the center turning lane to four to three uh uh conversion, and then uh still with the parking on both sides in that protected lane. Uh as you can see in the rendering here, next slide. Um here's like an example of some of the cross improvements that, that um we are recommending on that corridor. Um things like the rectangular rapid flashing beacon, just to give people a little bit more visibility, um if they're crossing the street, we actually did observe some kids trying to cross the street and um you know, they were able to safely cross, but you know, it's kind of, it seemed like there was a lot of cars passed before they eventually stopped and it seemed like it was difficult for the kids to uh get visibility from the driver, so that's where the rectangular flashing beacons would be helpful to them. Also, you're narrowing the crossing distance with curb extensions in applicable areas, because parking, it wouldn't interrupt traffic flows, and then um things like a median island also where applicable. Next slide. Um there's a big focus on Snow College and Ephraim Elementary in this plan, um because our big priority was to save rest of school, as mentioned. Um and these facility recommendations are separated multi-use paths, as shown in that image there. Slide. Um we also wanted to factor in, like uh we reviewed some of your development proposals, like Ephraim crossings, which um seemed like an amazing plan, it should be a huge asset to the city here. Um and uh we wanted to ensure that those uh plans incorporated um active transportation facilities into them, so they could better be integrated into the rest of the network. So we did include that in the plan as well, next please. Um and then neighborhood byways, so these are like the more rural roads. Um and this is kind of just like a general design concept, this isn't necessarily specifically what we'd be recommending in all these, but things like uh signs that have like pedestrian bike on it, like the, you know, the triangular or the rotated square signs, and then things like sheroes, like the painted bike. Um this is like a really cheap treatment for a road, but it just kind of signals to drivers that like, to expect uh cyclists on this route and just to kind of give them a little bit more visibility, um and that's on those lower traffic streets. Please, okay, so implementation, so that final step of the plan, we uh went through like a party in that, some like some funding sources. Um next slide please. Uh okay, so project prioritization, um you know, based on the community feedback, and we assessed like before and after like comfort and safety improvements, um we felt that the top number one priority should be safe rest of schools, um which includes the improvements on um those rim roads, like four hundred south and east, and then the ones around Snow College. And then um like including another path through Snow College, um and then also we felt the next priority was Main Street. Um because of all the access to destinations along that corridor, and then access to vital services, um which are all those remaining uh facilities there. Excellent. And then implementation plan, so we want to make sure this plan is very usable for the city and that there's um a lot of information therein for you all to, you know, be able to navigate how to like get funding for these different projects, um so there's uh an outline there of the different funding sources, you know, federal, state, local. Um that is, you know, in the plan that we sent you all, um and then kind of next steps for how to navigate that. Um so that is um kind of a presentation overview, uh have to answer any questions that y'all have, questions, concerns? Um but yeah, thank you for having us and yes, we're like.
Who's going to pay for all this?
Oh stop. So that's why, yes, one hundred percent, um so that's why uh we wanted to include that um those funding sources, you know, finding different grants that are available for active transportation projects. In that final piece of the plan, because we know, we don't want, obviously this, we don't want this to be a burden to the taxpayers, so that's a big piece, Cameron can talk a little more about that.
Yeah, yeah, I just want to mention, a big part of doing this plan is so that you can get grants. There's a lot of grants that require you to have a plan in place grouped before you can even report. So that's, that's one thing. Also, um as you know, Main Street is a UDOT facility, they would be paying for those improvements, and the state has invested a lot of money, I think it's around um forty-five million dollars a year in active transportation uh through the Utah Trail Network, which is it's, I think there's actually an ongoing project, the San Pete, San, San Pete County Trail Project, that uh was tied directly to this for that Main Street facility.
And I did want to just briefly, we did meet with the UDOTs last week, and they very much uh they, you know, have some questions about some of the, the improvements that we had on Main Street, but they really want um to ensure that uh you know, you all are fully on board, and um we're definitely very receptive of the council's recommendations and specific feedback. Uh so we have been talking to them regularly and um they've been very cooperative with this process.
Why can't you keep it on UDOT roads instead of our side roads, you got speed boats here, other things, take all the maintenance. You talk about the grants, but talk a little bit about after the grants are done, who's gonna take care of? Um why can't you go with the state portal or the state highway going through town and college loop, it's all state where they've got more?
Yeah.
Well, the most significant facility that's not on a state road is, is that multi-use path connecting to the, to the elementary school in the south. Um I think the reason for that was because we feel that especially elementary school students, they deserve a separated, safe way you get to school. And there, on those streets, there actually isn't even a sidewalk, and so um there is that initial cost, but facilities like that, I think the life span is gonna be much longer, just because the, the use isn't as high as it would.
Well, I'm, I'm not disagreeing on where you put, just, it's, I'm just saying, there's gonna be a big cost to take it. From there, if the city has to pay for it.
For sure.
Yes, some of their streets aren't probably, why, I, I don't, they may be. My concern is, there's a lot of concerns on, there's being bombed with snow plowing. There's a lot of, that, that's a big change for your city, but the biggest one is the cost after the grant is done. After it's here, who's gonna maintain it? It would probably, I would guess, even city. But that's gonna be a substantial, Ephraim City, I would believe to maintain it. What these disease saw.
For sure, yeah, I think that's something to consider, and a multi-use path facility like that, generally in smaller cities, they will similar to a sidewalk, this, the snow plowing and that sort of maintenance would be up to the PHS and property owner. Long-term maintenance would be up to the city, so this is to be considered. And one thing that we, we didn't quite mention was that we are in the plan review process. So we, we really appreciate feedback like that, and we're hoping to, you know, incorporating that and adjusting the recommendations as soon.
Yeah, we want you all to be really excited about this and, yes, about it, and we're definitely happy to uh adjust things, you know, or your feedbacks. Definitely.
Your plan seems to indicate taking a lane of traffic off Main Street here. That is we have enough traffic on eighty-nine, we, we're barely handling it now. And so to take a lane of traffic in each way for, for this project would be devastating to us. It would snarl up uh a very busy road. And uh it would, it, it, it's, I mean, as I've thought about this, as I look at the pictures and thought about it, it would be absolutely it, it would be intangible um to, to put something like that in on Highway eighty-nine. And Chad's right, um when we, I mean, Ephraim City, we, we pride ourselves, we have more sidewalk and infrastructure, walking infrastructure and, and biking infrastructure, uh if you're gonna use sidewalks than any other city in San Pete County. Uh our residents have paid dearly for them. And uh but what you're proposing is really maintenance commitment. That the city at this point just does not have the resources to maintain something like that. Right now, we maintain our sidewalks. And that was a decision made by uh the, the city council in the late nineties um to, to implement curb better sidewalk. That you go to Manti, it doesn't have that, you get off Main Street, it doesn't have it, you get a mountain, you know, Main Street, it, it doesn't have that. And so my concern is that we would eat up our ongoing maintenance budget um eventually maintaining a, a system like this.
Um Cameron, do you want to briefly touch on just kind of the the like recent findings and some of the like conversions of the fourth, the lane and?
Yeah. The, the Main Street facility um was a really, really big discussion during the community workshop. The reason we proposed reducing it to three lanes was, well, we wanted to meet the, the needs of the residents that we, you're in. We feel that uh.
But you only heard forty-six residents.
Sure, sure, those who showed up, but I, I think that, you know, just from us experiencing Main Street on our own, it, it is a pretty uncomfortable facility, and I understand that, you know, it's costly to improve it. But the land use there is very good, so I think having a complimentary um transportation facility would be really helpful for the town. There are also alternate uh proposals that we've been starting to buy, and we're willing to do that, the other thing is just mentioning, uh Tanner mentioned that the annual daily traffic is around twelve thousand.
Yeah, we know, yes.
Um and, and the UDOT standard for, for three lanes is up to twenty thousand, which isn't to say like traffic isn't involved, but I think there, there are different values that we can talk about here, and that perhaps, you know, reducing travel lanes for a few blocks downtown to add maybe a minute to your community. But it would improve safety and comfort for pedestrians, it's very.
And I think that the use of that, like it's more specifically about the feeling, is just, we, we feel that uh having that fully dedicated center turning lane, given that there are so many destinations downtown, there are a lot of side streets where people are turning, I mean, we experienced it when you're traveling to town and arriving here. Uh just having some location where somebody's trying to turn left, leading to a backup, and so I think that is important to keep in mind, like as far as how much that would impact traffic congestion, because we definitely don't want shit all that happening. I completely understand your concern. Um but freeing up those, the, the turning vehicles would, would, you know, lessen the impact of the reduction of one lane pretty considerably. Um so that is something to consider, and then I will also say um that we did, you know, in our discussions with UDOT, um you know, they mentioned, we discussed how perhaps there are options. There are options with, you know, given that there's a pretty big. Throughway through downtown. There are potentials of like kind of narrowing some of the lanes. I mean, we can't keep two lanes, but then we. You know, we divert some parkings, like side streets somewhere, things like that. So kind of just kind of tailoring towards more what you want. What we want to do is sure that, you know. There was this dedicated bike route to make it easier to get down, given that.
One of the concerns I have is you're catering to a small percentage of people where it's going to affect the state community. I don't like that. I, I, I was elected to protect town's whole community, so I don't get your small state.
For sure.
I think this has been growing fans. Literally appreciate you, Cameron, and Cameron, you guys being there. You know, Payson has historic Payson, it's kind of, I don't know, it's ten miles an hour, twenty miles an hour through a few parts of the historic part. Where there's the old pizza place. Center Street in Provo for several blocks, maybe six or seven blocks. Is. It's pretty slow. And we just haven't seen that before in Logan. In which we have relatives toward the Logan, so we take Tenth West, the bike paths, Fresh. And we're just, we're small. So it is, it is a little bit of an uphill battle sometimes, but I, I think we would be interested. I would be interested in seeing some of those alternative solutions. I appreciate the clarification on the three lane. Because I think that, yes, overall could be losing. Laneage. But it's not as bad as it sounds and it could just be for several blocks where the most. Croppings happen, the most bikes and walkers. But I think this is a really, really important. Conversation that has.
What's about? Anything in particular? It's obvious. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Also, I just want to say that if y'all. Please, if you have any other questions or concerns, feel free to email us. We really do. Sincerely want to get your full feedbacks. Definitely don't hesitate to. Tell us, you, you know, the other comments that you. Have after, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item three, consent items. Through, or item two, I'm sorry, consent items to a ratification warrant register. Between March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five and May second, twenty twenty-five. Any questions? Looking for a motion?
Who's the consent items?
Was it made by councillor Stevens? Second by councillor? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Soon as, moving on to item B, approval of April fourteenth, twenty-third and twenty-sixth.
I think it's consent items.
Oh, I, you're right. Sorry. Yep. Moving on to item three, study agenda, A transient room tax.
Hello. All right, so transient room tax. So what this is. Is it's a tax that would be assessed for those who stay at hotels, Airbnbs. A transient means somebody who is staying here for less than thirty days. So the county already has a transient room tax over Ephraim. So anybody who stays in any of those facilities, they're already paying a four percent tax. Yeah. Um, so. If we look at just twelve, twelve, zero, six, zero. This just clarifies that the, it would be one percent of the base room rate. It does not include, if there's other taxes that are being assessed, we're not taxing the amount that was taxed. We're not.
That services these different camps. So I think that's something we need to look into. We've. Already asked our attorney and that was a question that kind of stumped him. And, but that's something that we've got to look at. Something else.
Because education. Educational. If we don't want.
What if we do? I don't know.
Well, then we leave.
So that's something we're going to need more information on.
See, I. And I'm with Katie. What if we do want it to? Because. These large groups. Take. They drive on our streets, they walk on our sidewalks, they. Sometimes they get into trouble and require policing. And, and so it is a cost to the city, even though. Snow College may be making money. They're still housing them in private housing. And so.
For less than thirty days.
That's correct.
Usually it's five, six days. It's so, I don't, that's. Another question I have, it's. Word this. If a. Facility. Is located in Ephraim and we have some of these. That is a. A rehab. Facility. Either mental or drug. Rehab. And maybe they're there for fifteen days. They're being housed in a private. Institution. Then does that apply to them? I think that's another question we need to ask.
We'll need some clarification on that. But. It would seem yes.
If it's a for profit.
So. We will get the answers to these questions before we bring it back to you. But, so.
Any other council members, any other question? Regarding. That we need, we'd like answers for before we actually consider. Every other community, not every other, but I think most of them. It's going to be a transit. Unfortunately.
Yep, Manti does. Manti was surprised that we didn't. And Manti told us that we didn't. So thank you, Manti. So, yep. All right.
Thank you. Moving on to item four, action agenda, item four, A north men of annexation petition. Brandon, that's you.
How are you?
I'm well. How are you? I own an Airbnb. I like to keep things cheap so keep people coming. Yeah, so this, this annexation request is part of a plan of subdivision, this parcel required about four years ago. And I don't know the history on the north boundary there. I know there are four parcels directly to the west. On the south edge of. This parcel that ended up getting annexed some time ago and then a line from along that, that boundary just went right through this parcel of ground. Which actually the state is looking to adopt if they haven't already. I think they did actually last year to stop from cutting. Parcels like this and leaving a dangling peninsula out there. That actually landlocked it from county to municipal with access. So this, this is a bit unique. We have twenty acres there, fifteen acres are. In the county, five acres are currently annexed in our city. So. We're looking at making the, the parcel one contiguous annexed parcel.
You have access.
Yeah.
And is it a, is it a reported easement?
It is.
Have, have you brought that before the planning people?
It's been looked at by not only the land previous, the Mangelson family before. With their attorney as well as our fellow lake nears as well as talking about it with master plan. I know that issue's been raised before, but. That access has been there. I mean, Dad used to build hay for the Mangelsons forty years ago.
How, how big is the access?
Uh, the measurements. Yeah, according to the measurements, the access is over. Twenty-eight feet, I think, width without the actual easements that the city owns right now along that back edge. But that's going off the memory then. So. I'll have to. Look at that, but I, I know that when it was reviewed for the access with the city engineer, it was deemed to be.
I do have the city engineer here. If he would like to comment. Brian. He is.
Is their news different than what I was?
Yes. Brian, are you ready?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here. Hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Tell me more about the, the, the easement and things like that. I know previously there is. There is some ease. Court that I, I'm curious as to what the latest news on the width that is. It sounds like you. May not have that off the top of your head as far as how wide that, that easement is.
No, I know it was reviewed before the property was acquired with the Mangelsons with even some assistance from you, Brian, and it was discussed that. The width there with. The, the Mangelson's once sung a lot of his actual development attorney work. And so he reviewed it with engineers and it was deemed that it was widening. Along with the subdivision ordinance for large lot subdivisions that we would have any access there if we did.
The reason we're asking is because. I've got a neighbor up there, because I'm, I'm your neighbor right there.
Understood.
That is saying that there isn't access.
I understand. That's the point, that's the primary contention. And, and so before that acquisition was even made with the Mangelsons, that was reviewed with engineers. And deemed to be widened. And I was, I was standing on the corner of Fourth East and Seventh with you. Brian, when we talked about that. And it was discussed that it was. With the city's easement.
I think what we need is a piece of paper from, from the county. That says that. You have that, that, that easement. That's what we're looking for. So until we have a piece of paper. From the county saying that you have that easement. You don't have that easement. Brian?
That last part broke up a little bit. Could you repeat that question?
I just asked. How long ago that was reported, that easement?
And also, the applicant says that you reviewed this two years ago. And said it was okay.
One of the things that we've talked about previously. You know, we, we've known there's been some conflict there. There's the. There is recorded easement from the Danishfield subdivision. So there, there is legal access to the property. The question is. Is there enough access there for future development? You know, per the codes of the subdivision. I have not seen that yet as far as. Any survey documents that, that show otherwise. The survey plant that you submitted most recently does not include any of that offsite stuff. It only includes the onsite. I'd just be curious to see. If that is in fact, and again, the reason is, is we have. A property owner who asserts otherwise. So I don't recall. Me ever saying that this is adequate for a future subdivision. I do recall me saying that. There is some right of way there that was dedicated. As part of the Danishfield subdivision. So just like to some clarification on that.
Well. We talked specifically about the width of the road requirement along that edge. I can't remember the exact dimension, Brian, but I know that the difference between the north boundary and the south boundary on either side of that lane was, was talked about. And the distance between with the easements associated with the backside there in the north of Danishfield is more than enough by about six feet, as I recall. So. If we need to go back and have the engineers do that math, we can do that. This annexation petition actually has nothing to do with that yet. That's the subdivision request. And so today's annexation is just the first step and that still needs to be approved.
So your plan for secondary. Access.
Large lot subdivision is never required.
That is not true.
At least the subdivision ordinance I have printed that I, I can show you shows that it does not.
Brian? We do need a secondary access for a large lot subdivision, do we not?
So typically the, the second access would be required for anything after six hundred and fifty feet. There is the boundary, the west boundary of your parcel does exceed that six hundred and fifty feet. But again, if you have other documentation, you know, we'd be happy to look at it.
My concern is if we, so. It's been a year or so, a little more than a year, we had a similar situation. Two parties. That neither could. Access to a subdivision, right? So it wasn't, it wasn't an annexation. Issue. It was a subdivision issue. But. We, we approved the annexation. There's all this. Work by our city staffing. And then it ends up that there's no access. Right? That's a lot of, that's a lot of man hours that have gone to waste. I would not be opposed. I like, I'm not opposed to the annexation. I'm not. I think it'd be a great addition to our neighborhood up there. And you do great work as well. I would like to get that.
That's a.
Take, take care of before we. Before we go through the whole annexation hours of. Whatever our staff has to do.
Through, through your statement too, because on the annexation, as you know, this any of those. Deadlines that we have to do with. The student in other ways. Then we're going to start from all the way back and keep it through that process before and that would not be.
Help, help me understand the, the reason to not annex regarding. Questions about the subdivision itself. Why, why did, why does, why do they go in, 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 in?
Annexation is a legislative. Decision, right?
Right.
We get to decide. And so. I'm going to, I'm, I'm going to want to know what's going on in there. You, you say large lot. That means. No curb and gutter.
More than half acre parcel.
Right?
Yeah.
And is that what we want for that part of our city? Right? So that's, that's going to be another discussion.
But then as you're treading on now with the new House bill, what landlord wants to do as long as it meets and is compliant with subdivision ordinance, what they want is what more, is more important, right?
Right. Maybe just if it's part of the city.
Right, making that distinction. So, so as a landlord. Wanting a large lot subdivision in there, if it's compliant with the subdivision ordinance. It actually has to be approved.
If it's part of the city.
Correct. So having now a parcel that is cut.
Yeah.
With a.
I understand your.
There's a request for annexation and whether, whether the subdivision goes in today or it goes in down the road. That parcel having just portion of it being annexed from many years ago, do you do that still? Are you annexing partial? Partial parcels? Or are you always following property management? You should be following property management. So, so this, you know, whether, whether it goes in now or it goes in later. It's inevitably going to go in. It's going to need to be annexed at some point. And so as a property owner, the value of the property for me. I'd rather have it be all one contiguous. Municipal. Value.
The problem I have. Is that we. Is verification of access.
There were, there was a lot of time spent on that because of a neighbor raising. So we'll, we'll get that. There was a lot of time spent on it.
My feeling is that until that happens. I'm not going to think of moving the annex application.
Because of its potential use? No, 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 because that access. There's access.
But we're, we're not seeing any paperwork. Well. We're not seeing the, the data current work.
So there's, there's right of way definitely within the county. That even Brian acknowledged that again. There, there is reported access, whether it's wide enough is the question. And so, so there is definitely access to the property. The question is whether it's wide. And that, there was a lot of time spent on, there was a lot of time spent on that. So I'm confident about that, but. There is access to the parcel. It's a matter of getting to that. That's what's. We, we can get to the subdivision question down the road, but this has to take. We, we can get to the subdivision question down the road, but this has to take days. Actually, can I not make a request for annexation without any attempt to do any subdivision improvement? I can.
You can, and we can deny it.
Sure.
If we want.
If you have, if you have, if you have a justifiable right, you do. Right now, it's it's, it's pretty sticky whether you do.
Well, I think, Brandon, the question is, like, you have enough access to the property.
Right.
To even begin looking at the annexation.
Well, obviously, Mayor, I have looked at it and I have the confidence in it based on what was measured and looked at and all of that. That's why I acquired it. That's why I'm making the application. So we get it, but the application, obviously, this is a process for a period of time. We're just trying to speed that up.
So in order to accept the application for annexation, we need to know if you have the proper amount of it. That's what we need. We need documentation that says you have the proper right of way.
Do, do you know what the time limit is for us to be able to? If we decide to accept your petition tonight, and Brian might know this too, or if Megan's on there.
You go ahead.
Um, but we're not, we're gonna do it with, with a requirement that before the annexation is completed, we have to have proof of that access. I, I mean, I think that would be, that would be my vote at least. I'm not speaking for them, but, um, there is a time period from the time that we approve the petition to the time of the finalization of the annexation. Right, with the state, it's my understanding. Please.
Uh, if the council approves the petition tonight, it will then certification period of time. And, uh, the protest that has to be left thirty days for protest, the annexation. And then at that point, uh, this city reporter and the city attorney who ordered to view all the documents, nothing to do with subdivision. You're only dealing with the annexation process.
Yep.
And, uh, then make sure that everything has been done correctly and certify the annexation. At that point, once it's been certified, it will then go through the process of ordinance, yeah.
So that, it's that.
Look, we have a.
At least thirty days.
Yeah, I would, I would have to admit, if you approved it tonight, I would go certification. Uh, I have a little bit of code right off the top of my head. It's like ten days. I have ten days to set out notices to, uh, affected entities for, uh, certification of, uh, annexation. So there's many, many steps and, uh, time requirements from the state concerning this. But the annexation is not approved until the point of, uh, ordinance approved by the council.
So, but there is a timeframe and that's what we're, that's a little bit of our concern too is, is getting these, this proof of the width of the access in time, so we don't have to start over.
And I think if we had all of that, I, I for one would be very interested in the, with a proposal like this, uh, based on the other, but it's, as Dennis said, very worthy. It could be a lot, so, so, because like those two things, we're excited, we're following your thoughts and everything, but.
Just excited about the huge ones. But I, I do, I do have a firm belief in a landlord's
Yeah.
Right to.
And I didn't make that, sorry, Dennis, my, my thing is if, if this was gonna be an issue.
So why, so why can't you?
Um, counsel, counsel, can you really talk into your mics? Not very well. Move that mic a little bit closer. Thank you.
It's, it's using the property boundaries of all sides of the street and obviously the distance in between. Quick Dan, I would gladly add that, the access was a question of, of it actually. And it's, it's, it's shown in the report and it's, it's been there for more than forty years.
Yeah.
Yeah. What the limits are. Yeah, that was studied pretty heavily for that petition and the plans were the most, so we'll do that. Is there, is there a process to still approve and then have that be a condition?
Uh, my understanding from how you have, uh, our attorney, it would probably, any conditions would exist in annexation for that. It would be signed before the council approved the ordinance.
So this is gonna come back to the council for the ordinance?
Yes.
Um, annexation, is there anything else that we want to?
Yes.
To.
Yes.
Brandon.
Well, I think, again, um, there, if the applicant wants to, uh, put in a, a subdivision, um, there are different requirements depending on what he wants to put in. And so, uh, our, our attorney has advised us that we would need to have uh, uh, an annexation agreement, uh, agreeing to all the things depending on which development you, it's, you go with. Have that signed before the council agrees to annex for, before the ordinance, right? Correct, yeah. But the timeline is pretty, pretty tight, right? So, um, that, if we. Lloyd, can you say that again into your mic?
You say all, what are you talking about, all? Both subdivision approval as well as the annexation or just the annexation?
The, the application for annexation with, with the verification of access. If we approve it with, if we approve it with stipulation, right? That starts the clock. That starts your clock. Is that right?
Understood. If you basically only have the choice to approve or deny. Um, if you do nothing, it is third approval. Or and, and petition, approval, approval of petition is basically, uh, impossible to proceed in the next step.
But if we deny, that doesn't then make it so that Brandon can't come back with the information? And then start that off. It doesn't, I mean, if we deny it, it, it isn't telling him no forever, is it?
Uh, no, you can always restart the annexation.
Okay.
Will that require the whole process to be done again?
The annexation code's about forty pages long, so I don't memorize.
I know your, your preference would be to get it approved tonight, but well, if it's with that, this stipulation and it starts this clock, how, how confident are you?
Often, actually, I don't have a problem with that. I, as I say, I look at property boundaries as well. I've gone through math and measures personally. So before I, you know, my real estate buying a property, I'm, I'm confident, um. I was under, I was, I was led to believe, I guess, that with discussion of the annexation being the topic tonight, that it wasn't about the approval of a use of land as much as let's just get this property part of the city and it's, that's the first step. Then from there, it's okay, let's make sure all of the ducks are in row for the potential subdivision. So that's what I was prepared for too.
So you're asking, so if you, if we take out this, well, their use? And we just, if you, do you wanna just annex the property without use of?
I, I do regardless, Chad. The, the difference of, of approval for its use will still have to come before you. And, and the ability to actually meet all of the demands for its subdivision.
Subdivision don't come before us anymore.
But it still has to meet and be compliant with.
But the annexation will come back.
Just, but what I'm saying is if the limit isn't compliant with subdivision, then I, I don't have a subdivision either. But we still have additional property, so that's, you know, that's annexed. I, I'm I, I know the intent here is to make sure that you guys are looking after what's in the best interest of the city or the potential subdivision. Obviously, I'm gonna try, I have to be compliant. I've been through that before. It's trying to make sure that all those ducks are in row, but the math of it, so I, I'm confident and I'll try to get you that information. The time clock of when we get back on city council to do another annexation petition or if we have to start all.
Let's say it's two weeks.
It's those kinds of things that I would rather. On the merits of, of the fact that it is an application for annexation, the parcel is currently divided. Whether I have a potential use or not, I think you guys should really consider the annexation. What does it hurt you?
I think it's the access that is, again, I come back to this, it's the, it's the access. It takes a tremendous amount of, of time and money for the city to then begin the process. And it's a long process. Um, all, all we're wanting is to see that there is sufficient access of the property. That's, that's the only thing that we're, we wanna be satisfied with, with regard to the, with regard to your petition for annexation.
Understood.
That's the only thing it hurts.
Understood.
It is, Kansas has to start this, on these man hours.
I understand.
It may come to nothing.
I appreciate that. In two thousand and six, the South Meadow subdivision had about four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars donated to the city street. So I'm well aware of the cost to make sure access is there for the city because I put it in and I'm prepared to do it. As long as it obviously is compliant. But, but when it comes to the cost of what's gonna take place at a subdivision, I'm gonna bear those and I'm gonna make sure it's done well.
Yeah, we don't doubt that, that part. What, what we just need to see is that.
It's there, it obviously.
And I believe you, but we, it's incumbent upon us to actually look at the document, say, verify it and say, oh, yeah, okay, let's move on with the annexation.
Your, your master plan map even shows the way.
Yeah.
Can you get that, do you think you can get that for us in a couple of weeks?
We can put you back on the, the, uh, city agenda in two weeks.
We'll see what we can do.
Okay.
What is the status of the application then today?
Well, there needs to be a vote on that.
If you get on the application, we'll give verification of all access of the width.
Well, this is the kitchen.
Can I tell you, uh, it does, denying it tonight does need to start all over again. So it does go back to notice petition, all of that. So it does start.
Okay, this does make a difference.
The file cost is two hundred.
Yeah, that, that.
Could we waive the two hundred? The fee?
Kansas, if we didn't vote on this at all tonight, it's proof. So there's no way to table it?
No.
But we could, we could waive the two hundred dollar fee.
Yeah, yeah. Hey, council members, that's something to consider.
Lloyd has a motion. Yes, he does have a second, but does not.
I have a second on this motion to not approve the application.
Let me just make sure that I can stay with it. Don't mean a hit. There's a, some chance that our staff will go to some hours of work for this. Ending up in frustration on the city side and the applicant's side. There's a chance it could work out great for both sides if the documentation is satisfactory. But I mean, it's a risk.
It is.
And also, before we have conversation, we need a second on that, that motion.
So there's no second.
Right, so there should be no discussion. Got it? Okay, now discuss.
So the motion is to deny petition application.
I have a question. What goes into preparing, uh, the petition? Yeah, what, what does that involve?
You wanna take that, Megan?
Uh, actually, the applicant is answering.
It's, it's about ten or thirteen different documents that have to be put together.
Are you done?
If I have to start over, I have to start.
Does Megan have a comment here?
Yeah, Megan, would you like to comment on the process?
Um, sure. Sorry, I didn't quite hear what was said. It was cutting out. Um, but essentially, he would just have to resubmit the documents that he already had. So yes, there would be some legwork, but as far as I understand, he already has those documents. So it would just be resubmitting them. Um, so yes, uh, you know, an inconvenience, but it, I don't think it would be starting from ground zero because the documents have already been prepared. Um, and we have given templates and stuff like that to go off of. Um, so it's just notifying those entities again, if that makes sense.
And how many entities are these?
Um, I believe the affected entities, so you have to notify the county and then the school district, fire district, um, and bridge. Um, yeah, there's a couple, I think there's five or six entities that you have to notify.
Is that by letter?
Yes.
Okay, so. I, I believe we can, that's an, that's an administrative decision. Yeah, I'm, I'm like. Do we? As far as a fee to us? Okay, then I have no control of that, yeah.
Mr. Bayet, Bayet, have, have you collected any money for Brent?
I have not. I have not. Brian?
So he can't be, yeah.
So.
Sorry, the mics are cutting in and out. I hear about every, every other word. I hear Katie loud and clear, but the other mics cut in and out. So I apologize if, if I've, uh, missed a question, but.
Yeah, the question is, Brian, um, have we received any, uh, fees, uh, for, for this? Yeah, the question is, Brian, um, have we received any, uh, fees, uh, for, for this annexation as of yet?
Uh.
Have you taken any payments?
I personally have not taken payment. It would be Megan that would normally take that.
Okay. Right. And she has responded that she has not. So. Okay, well, um, any fees that we have charged you, we won't charge you again. I can commit to that.
Okay, any other questions, guys? Just gonna call for a vote on the motion.
Here comes the documentation. The notices, it costs, sorry, I've been working through an annexation process. I'm his daughter. I'm a nanny as well, so every time you say anything. Cause he works so much, so I've been going through this process. Um, it has been paid in some time. Um, but it's to mail out the letters to the neighbors with a piece through their feet of, or two.
But what's the fee that they can be for the application? So.
I don't know what it was.
So anyone pay that? So that's where they're trying to find that.
Then it's also wants to mail out the notices too surrounding. So it's also our, so that one, that's getting denied.
She's a good. She and Harry are.
And the access road, I have noticed that it is on local maps. It is.
But we talked about that.
It is, like, it's, it's shown on there as, or said in the good.
We don't get that.
There is a motion before us, council members. So I'm gonna call, and second, I'm gonna call for a vote. All those who, uh, are, who do not want to accept the petition at this time, please vote yes. All those who want to.
Verify what you're saying.
Well, those who are gonna make your, say what your motion was. Right, okay. Okay, so those who are in favor of denying the petition.
Oh, yes. Yes.
No. Yeah.
I should have spoken earlier.
That's a trigger.
Lady expert, bro. Though, with our G and S. So ultimate frustration of the part of the applicant. No.
Okay.
We need a new motion.
I move that we. Petition of annexation.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Norfald, second by Councilmember Rebeal. All in favor?
Yes.
So three? Those opposed?
No.
Okay, so your petition was accepted. Thank you.
Listen, Brandon, just, we're gonna want that.
Oh, I'm gonna get right on.
Side, not just, I'm, 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 I'm talking, I know you know about access. We're talking about that often. Accession agreement with, that our attorney's gonna look at.
Okay, we'll get you, we'll get you.
Before. Before anything else, for them, that you review that with your legal people.
We'll, we'll get it out, Megan. Thank you.
It does start the clock.
Understood, appreciated. Thank you.
Moving on to item B, EFRM City Ordinance twenty-five dash oh five amendment, a bit of a lot size and frontage requirements. Megan?
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
We can.
Okay, perfect. Um, so, uh, Camino Verde group has petitioned, um, for a smaller lot size and a smaller frontage for single-family homes. So typically in the R one zone, um, are, it's an eight thousand square foot lot, um, with a seventy-five foot frontage. The petition is to have a three thousand square foot lot with a forty foot frontage. Um, these will be normal-sized homes, not tiny homes, but they will just have smaller lots. Um, the purpose and intent of these is to have a smaller lot size to reduce the cost, um, of the, the overall cost of the home. Um, it's kind of a creative way to look at affordable housing in the state of Utah. Um, as staff, we've discussed this, and currently in that zone right now, um, they could do townhomes, duplexes, things like that. This would actually be, single-family homes, your own four walls. Um, there will be side yards, adequate parking. Um, it's just a smaller lot size. So I think we're in favor and of, uh, creating more single-family home options without necessarily, um, a bunch of more multifamily options. So I believe the applicant is here, um, if they would like to present.
If you'll just state your name for record. Thanks, I'm Kurt McAlvey, Flex Homes, okay? So our focus is making single-family homes affordable again. So much of the focus on affordability has shifted, as Megan said, to multifamily. So townhomes, you see, townhomes, stacked flats, apartments. But we've created this missing middle, cause there hasn't been much flexibility on single-family. So the affordable single-family in Utah, and in Utah County, here in Sandy County, is very difficult. We're talking about a single-family affordable home to get into the market at three hundred thousand dollars and grow with it. So that's what Flex starts, starts with, a twelve hundred square foot home. If we could just show the video first, maybe just to show.
So it's not tiny, but it is.
It's not tiny. And the whole thing goes from twelve hundred square feet, you can expand it up to twenty-five hundred square feet. So it goes to a fully invest, without investment, initially affordable. So this is a forty-foot frontage. So you can see on the, uh, these are twenty feet by thirty feet is the base, so twelve hundred and thirty-two to kick out. Um, side yards, it's alley loaded. See where we go around, all different elevations, the keys, making elevations consistent with city and legacy.
Standing here.
Yes, standing, many of those are coming. So, I, I saw him in Sweden, when I was in Sweden. Spring City has incredible. So in the back here, it's like this, this would be a fully built out, but you can initially, so, you know, initially buy, maybe go to the next one, we'll see.
Okay.
So here's the base home, twelve hundred square feet. You've got everything ready for the expansion.
Add.
Everything set, so it's totally flexible, wastewater, H vac, everything. But you start in, you get into the market at twelve hundred square feet. Seventeen, eighty square feet with a full garage, side parking. The other side of the unit, we have little deeper homes. You'll see, you can do a two-story expansion. You've got side yards, parking up for six vehicles per, um, per unit. So the whole idea is to find what in Utah is considered to be that missing, though. Single-family homes, they're affordable.
Also, there's one question for you. Whoa, right there, stop. Is that footage the nice city for the expansions?
Yes.
And does that start on the?
The initial base home is with all the future expansion homes. So what's unique about Flex Homes is we built in and designed it all expansion. So it is less than the cost of initial construction to build. Most times you buy a base home, you want to expand it, but. Very expensive. So here the base, base homes, fine, expansion is less than. But everything is there. So in, in the meantime, the, the patio is what you have is your, okay, footing's already installed. You have the pad for the garage. We just got legislation passed in Utah to enable some of this in many other cities. Here in EFRM, you don't have a requirement for garage at initial occupancy. Many cities do. So HV one eighty-one, state legislates, you pass that, if you're an affordable homeless in eighty percent of the county, you don't have to have a garage property. So that's why we're expanding this out throughout Utah. There'll be a lot of different places to go. But, uh, EFRM is perfect, but we need that forty-foot frontage to make the whole package affordable. You can get into that home for three hundred thousand, you can expand it out. And so you've got a lot of different options you can do. One story, two story, garage here, oval garage, but you wanna make single-family homes very investable. This is nothing more than the pioneers and what Dad used to do. Build the house, expand it out. Get a lot of those pioneers, expand them. We're staying with that. So Craig, our partner and brother, I was gonna show you the layout for this outfit fit, but, this creates a very dynamic and investable community that's affordable. Very option.
Sorry, can I just, can I just jump in real quick while he's coming up?
Sure.
Um, just to clarify, so this is a request to create a new zone. Um, and it would have to be requested if other people wanted to do this. So if we approve this tonight, these developers would now come back and ask for this property to have this specific zone. Um, Brian and I have both discussed this, and we feel this is a great option, but not, it isn't an option for every place in the city, right? It's gonna be a good transition piece from single-family to maybe apartment complexes, things like that. Um, but yeah, so this would be a request for a separate zone, and this is what they would intend to do if they, if that zone request was granted.
Megan, sorry, before you start, can I ask you a question?
Get really close to the mic.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So. It's a, it's a new zone, and we're, what would, it's gonna be the body that denies or approves whether this overlay gets, on a piece of, on a, on a particular zone. Is that the planning and zoning?
So, um, a zone change would come to planning and zoning and city council.
Okay, so we're approving a new zone, and every time it's gonna be, uh, used, put into place, it would come to both entities because it would require a zone change.
That is correct.
I'm the younger, uh, wiser brother. So Megan explained it perfectly. Uh, Flex Homes is, is trying to find that missing middle. And, and, uh, I have an engineering friend. We, we do a lot of development. And I asked everybody, where would you like to live? He could choose anywhere in Salt Lake. Usually it's in venture areas. Where would you like to live? It's the avenues, it's the college streets, and it's Sugar House or Gate. I can't build any of those homes anywhere else now because we have taken out this missing middle. You go to, you have a Sugar House, most of those lots are forty or fifty feet wide. And the garage, what brings the charm? Cause it's not all garage dominant.
Yeah.
I, I don't drive down and see old new garages. You know, I, I get very frustrated because with the designers, do they, they, the very first thing they, they start with is, all right, placement of the garage. Now we gotta live around that, and we're gonna, we're not gonna finish it, we're gonna get fire taped and unpainted and put our garbage in it. Then we're gonna build our house around that. Well, so we've turned it on its head. So let's get back to the days of affordability and expandability. So investment in homes, yeah. My home, I could not expand. Uh, I've looked at it, my wife's asking, are you plausible? No. Sorry, the, the expense is astronomical. So we took out all the entitlements. So we looked at this and said, okay, wha- what do you do in a, in a remote? Excavation, concrete, structural, roofing, electrical, plumbing. And we've taken out all the entitlements. And so when you go to your, you see your foundation, your foundation is capped with a Trex seat, basically. And that is your future ownership, or it's your future.
It's your unfinished basement.
It's your unfinished basement. It's exactly what, it's exactly where we probably all grew up. But we've lost it. We've lost that. My engineering friend were probably between conceptual and finished about forty-five thousand lots in Utah. Affordable, only a handful. Um, one developer, uh, called with the city, said, uh, I, I, I am thrilled to do affordable. I said, where did you do your last affordable project? We did an affordable project in Draper. Everybody was very, you know, encouraged. Somebody did affordable in Draper. How did you do that? And what did you do? Within fifty townhomes, how many are affordable? Nine. How come those are affordable? City gave us a hundred thousand dollars a piece. Doing the four.
Oh, we're not gonna do that.
So. We're, we've got the excitement in, in things charged up at, at the state level and, and through a lot of city meetings like this, is that this is a market solution. We're looking for the market to correct and help create that, uh, ability to invest again in yourself. Um, no longer, you know, don't be the slave to the renters. Be, be an owner. Uh, so, uh, this is one of the first, we were very encouraged, uh, when we got, it's, it's been a series of connections to get us to EFRM, and it's been amazing. And, and, uh, the developers said, we have a piece of land that, that Flex Homes would probably fit on very well. And so, uh, this is actually the first place we will build a flex. We have, we have a contractor here with us who's partnered with us on these, uh, elevation construction. And it's been, it's been a fantastic journey to take it from a conceptual, to get bids, to realize, yes, we can produce. You have to take the green out. And you have to do that. And, and you have to think outside the box. So we're asking the city to be partners with us to, to start again, produce, you know, production of affordable houses. So maybe Brody would like to, we're, we're talking CFP resident or native. Almost.
One of them.
Oh, one of me.
He'll build one of these homes for you, you can move back, back.
Good. Just think so you brought in. Your perspective of construction.
Uh, yeah, Roadland Rail Base Construction, I live in Benjamin. Went to school here, spent a lot of time over here, life's in, they've been here since Sparkle Lions. Stretches and. Grandpa married up in Spring City, so, yeah. Um, just to Greg and Kurt's point really quick, and I'll throw some numbers out at you, um. I, I was on, on this side, uh, in, in public entity for twenty years, um. Magical professional, big building code, building inspection, planning, zoning, all those kind of things for different cities. Consulting work, uh, and I've seen that green component that's driven this up. Brandon, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna knock Wilson family. A landlord's gonna get the maximum price out. That's what, this is market-driven. If you can sell yours for a hundred thousand an acre and you're allowed to pay one twenty-five, he's expecting one twenty-five on the next sentence. The breaking point in affordability starts at lot size. That's what kicks it out. We, we, everybody wants half-acre lots. I want gardening, I shoot and, some chickens in the backyard, cause they can't buy twelve dollar, doesn't make, so, you know. Oh, can't do that when land costs drive up, and we're running out of land because we have mountains and we're stuck. We lived in West Tennessee, it's a different conversation. We didn't, we're here, so. Getting smaller lots, smaller, smaller frontages, less individuals get into the market in a single-family home that doesn't have shared walls. Cause if I buy a townhome as a young couple, or a new officer at jail, or, uh, trying to get tall and pro-lot as a skyline, I'm stuck in. I'm stuck in that market forever. Home gets sold to the next affordable housing, newlywed couple stays at that level. Never. Or we're suddenly renting. This allows people to expand and, and grow with their home, the full build on that other six hundred and something, that's big house. And so we've come together, almost with a philanthropy type view of how can you, how can we change this issue? How can we change the world? Everybody's got a little skin to gain. We're running the comparables and seeing what the ill cost is with what's right across the street with the single-family homes and the townhomes, and we're going to be substantially under, leaving a lot of equity on the table for the buyer. Hoping that we can make up that margin all, over the next four, five years. And here in Nephi and Pelberg and Eagle Mountain, Bransville, you know, kind of Walmart methodology of volume over margin for, for the lot play. That's the only way affordability works, other than that, this is a talking point to get rid of, that's it, that's the reality. Because everybody wants to sell for maximum value of their land and their home and everything else. So we, as a builder, we have to, our margin is super tight. We're leaving a lot of money on the table for the homeowner, and these owners get in and have thirty-four thousand dollars in equity as us giving that to them to make a difference so that my kids and your kids and your kids can have a place to live and not be separated by four layers of sheetrock. And have a house. The only way to do that is you have to be with a group of people that all has the same mentality that we're going to make the changes, starts here, starts with us, we're going to, it's, how much money do you need to make at the end of the day? What, why does greed need to be the factor that decides what we need to do? And so let's do the right thing and, and give everybody a chance that we had a chance and you guys had a chance, that the new generation does not, and they're not going to have. And they're going to be stuck in townhomes and apartments and renters and everything. And it's spilling into San Pete and to, uh, see what was happening in Ephraim the last two years, it's coming this way. And there's more building permits going out of, back at office the last two or three years, and there's probably been the last hand. About rain, rain, everybody's, the houses everywhere are going because they can't afford to live and lost that funding. Everybody's got to drive that, look, get a job, so. It's coming this way, really quick. You know, affordable for Ephraim is different than affordable for Beal. It's affordable for Draper or Harrow. So you try to get this concept in those, but again, it's a restriction of the lot size that we have to start with. After that, we can work with me, we've worked with new building technologies, we've worked with new, new systems to make it more efficient, we can build them faster. So that takes down some of the cost, you know, we're not taking four, five, six months to build a house, doing it in days, so all those overhead soft costs comes down. So we're really trying to revolutionize the real solution to this issue. But our hands have been tired because of the lot size, how much the land costs. So if I can cut it in half, the price gets sixty or seventy thousand dollars cheaper, right there.
I do have a question. Is there a possibility, and maybe there isn't, because of Max, uh, wanting to make Max profit, of course. But do you have any green space, shared green space that, uh, that these homes are?
Yeah, so crap out front, and I don't know if you can pull up Ephraim Crossing, I'll show you this.
Last page? Okay. Got it? Out this way? Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, what's, what do you think about closing here? Development is, this is part of a mission. So open space is, is a collective and common. So on this point, you'll see that the common green is all the area on the, on the south side of, of bars. So the lots that would be individually owned are the north pieces. So when we, we talked about the different sizes of Flex Homes, you've got a shorter version here that can go up to seventeen hundred square feet, four-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath. This one goes to five hundred twelve square feet and six bedroom. Uh, and, and there's all stages in between, and you don't have to choose until you're ready to expand. Again, Flex gives you the flexibility, do I want one-story, do I want two-story? Can I afford, can I afford the room over the garage with the kids when they're naughty, or do I just do the garage? And so all those things can come into play as their equity increases, and again, investment needs to be. When, when I talk about affordable on, on any other project, I see everybody's heads turned down, they said, put it over there. Well, those are our kids. And we want to give them an opportunity to, to enjoy the benefits of, of the equity of the lots, and of everybody else who's enjoying, appreciating the profit. And so you're, you're building in affordability, and then you're building in expansion and, and that equity that then serves to send kids to college and do all the things that we've probably all done. But I'm afraid that, that is missing for that exchange, so. Uh, so this one, this site has, has thirty-six units. Half of them are the shorter version, and we swap them back and forth so that there's a mix.
So they're not expandable?
Yes, they, they're expandable, so this is expand, they're, they're each expand. Blue is the base build.
Is the base build, and white is where they would.
And white is the, 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 the blue ones is the garage, not the sweet. On, on these mustard ones, this is the base build, the green is your patio. So if you saw in the video, a lot of that.
Okay.
You know, because, because some of the vision of Flex Homes, I think, ah, just had this dirt pile up back and somebody expects me to go build them. You end up with boulders and the foundation there with a city sitting there, well, you can put the patio in and you have your garage pad. So, uh, we were up in Ogden. And, uh, this might be not, not fitting for Ephraim, but it was fitting in Ogden. Uh, one of the question, the expansion of Flex and what do we do? Missioners was builder. And he said, I've poured through those plans. I can build that in a couple of weekends with a framing hammer in one hand and the coolers lighting it. So they said they've taken out all the impediments to an expansion. And we've actually bid the expansions and verified, yes, the expansions are about twenty percent less at this point. And again, we're, we've already approved that, with twenty percent less than the ratio. Because creation, bouldings.
At a price point on, if somebody wanted to build the whole thing right in the beginning?
Yes.
Five hundred, twenty-five hundred.
Three seventy-five, three seventy-five on these. That would be then a four-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath. And these, these are, these are, again, the, the options that gives you for later are classroom facility. An owner's suite, an owner's suite and, and an office. Owner's suite, bedroom, all those combinations. Any questions?
Council members, just a couple of comments that I want to make. Um, the state is moving toward this. They're, they're desperately trying to find a legislative tool to mandate to communities this very thing. We have, right now in the state of Utah, sixty thousand, a deficit of sixty thousand. And in order to meet this within the next one to two years legislative cycles, uh, the legislature is going to mandate that. Yes, but smaller lot sizes. Number two.
Unless some of this, we'll make decisions to perhaps some things like this, then maybe we can.
And that comes with my number two, thank you. And that is, this isn't found anywhere, uh, else in San Pete County. So let's be the first. There's, there's something important about having a mixture of different homes, lot sizes. Uh, if somebody wants to buy a, a half acre, we've got it. If someone wants to buy a, uh, a nice family home on a third of an acre, we got it. What we don't have is, is a starter home. My daughter, Sarah, uh, lives in Monterey Bay, California, pretty, pretty heavy-duty housing market. She, luckily, she lives on a, on an Air Force Base, so she can afford a home. She, but she owns a home at their last residence. Uh, Arsenal Air Force Base, she owns a home in Louisiana. A thirty-five hundred square foot home. It was two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Beautiful home, beautiful neighborhood, it's a gated community. She has been looking for a home because it, my, my son-in-law is going to be deployed in, uh, the beginning of Jan-, July and June sometime. She wants to buy a home in Ephraim. She's been looking at every single home. She has a family of, of four children, her and her husband. She's called me, she says, Dad, she said, I cannot afford a home in Ephraim. So the one thing we don't have is a starter home. It is a price index that, that is a starter home index. That's a problem. And then, a- a- and so I, I, I think we do want our kids back here, I want all of my six kids back here. All of them. And this would be the beginning of them being able to come back here. And so I, I, I just think there's some things going on statewide legislatively. There's some things going on with a great mixed use within Ephraim City. And, and I don't think the smaller lot size, when we control it with planning and zoning, I don't think the smaller lot size is, is, is a bad thing. I, I think it, I think it fills a niche. So that's, that's, counsel, you have probably questioned.
I made two quick comments.
Please.
Again, just back to the buffer really quick. Yes. This is your apartments across the street. This is Corrigan's single-family, so let your buffer transition. The other thing, just really quick, the, I know building code isn't signing out. If I pour a foundation between those and bury it with dirt, I have a townhome. And I can get that through a grant. So we're trying to come here and, and do this as a team instead of. What can we do to make your community better? And how can you guys have input and help this work for what you want for your team?
Yeah.
And otherwise, we could just sign an application at a townhome park and, and have this conversation.
Any questions? So, so, so are we going to vote on this?
Yes, it's on the just.
So exactly what are we voting? Are we voting on location? Are we voting on?
Minimum lot size.
It, voting is a long chain.
It's, it's creating a new zone. That, that's all you're voting on tonight, is creating a new zone. No, no, that is an example of the type of building that you could expect to see. But we, if, if you approve this new zone, they will have to come back to planning and zoning and to the council to, on this specific parcel. So, it, uh, so, to rezone the parcel, right?
One, to rezone, and two, to, to, for a subdivision application.
What these guys have presented.
Right. Good clarification.
These guys have been talking.
Did you have something you wanted to say? Are you just answering questions?
Any other questions, Captain?
Did you get any questions?
Just want to make sure and all should. Or just do a question on the motion that this is just for this, this here is not.
It's right in, it's right in.
Seventy-four.
Yeah, well, adopt the. ECO twenty-five dash, ECO, ECO twenty-five. We got first step, thirteen invasions.
Yes, yes.
Last second.
Motion made by Councilmember Bill, second by Councilmember Anderson, all in favor?
Yeah.
Yes, any opposed? Okay, it's passed. Moving on to item C. And what's Joe, you wanted to say?
And these guys, I have four grandchildren that I'm pretty sure are related to you, since their last name is McAbby.
Oh, really?
Dan McAbby, you know Dan?
Pretty small tree, so.
That's what I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item, uh, item C D from city resolution twenty-five dash O eight. Industrial Park project area.
Alright, um, so we went over this, uh, in, uh, study session a couple of weeks ago. Uh, what this, this is a trigger resolution that allows us to start, uh, collecting money, which then can be spent in this area on roads or whatever is needed. Uh, there's a twenty-five-year, uh, clock, and then, um, it's a very tight, uh, area. It's, uh, over the new, uh, hotel. Um, any questions?
This is a, this is an additional revenue source for Ephraim City. With this, with this pill. Uh, it was suggested to us by, um, was it Abby or was it?
Jenna?
Well, it was Jenna.
Yep.
Uh, suggested that. It, 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 Jenna suggested, she said, are you guys looking at this? Because it's a revenue source, it's huge, but it's a little revenue source. So it's, it, it's pretty positive for you, so. There are really no downs. There's really no, nothing bad about this.
Correct. And I'm here if you have any questions, but yes, you're correct. I was hiding her as a special guest. From above, sorry. My daughter was at track in Cedar City today, so I couldn't make it in person, but I'm here if you have any questions.
Do you have any questions, councilmembers? Okay, any promotion?
City resolution twenty-five O eight skyline for it or industrial park project area.
Motion made by Councilmember Steve, second by Councilmember Oliver.
Yes.
Thank you folks, thank you. Moving on to item T, private placement funding for gas power plant.
You have to stand up for me?
Excuse me, um, so yeah, I mean.
What Senator Owen said earlier, you know, I mean, I think it's probably a good thing, it's all we're hoping for here to discuss. And yeah, it seems more or less private placement, you have school to follow. Um, that's pretty, we've had a lot discussing about this. Have any other questions?
Corey, I, I was talking with Representative, uh, Sheldon. Yes, um, about gas supply to this plant. We. We may get it cheaper through somebody else other than you, right?
Correct. Or when something, if you feel like it's, we get that gas line, you know.
That vendor.
Yes. Yeah, and I didn't know that.
They didn't work for Big Fire.
Other vendors out there that could do that other day, right, so, so that's a good thing, and, and that's.
And, and that's what we'll do, we'll, we'll reach out to the merchant or shopper. Still have to pay, you know, and just do sell that to us to, to that location and we hear said whatever that be. But, uh, yeah. Yeah, it, it's definitely worth looking at, seeing what that, what that technical cost is. Yeah. Cheaper the better, don't care money, cheaper, I guess, yeah. That's, yeah, but, uh, uh, anyway, you know, it, it would, once, once you guys just, this is just a formal BS. There'll be other documents, uh, probably in the next couple of weeks, there'll be a, a generation of people. And there'll be a capacity treatment as well, who do you have to pick it up, the role and. If, if we go this direction, it's going to make it a lot easier on this. Direction and, uh, if there's any, uh, change orders, you know, they take care of it. I don't have to come to you and say, hey, there's change in the price. So, so it's getting a lot smoother, I feel like a lot of other cities are doing this. Uh, Payson's doing, Iron's doing, uh, the ice running, so there's a lot of cities that are actually coming to the U M S bonding process. Be paying off in twelve years? Uh, if we could, um, I was just doing some math, mayor, uh, I think we'd be paying about thirty thousand a month for, for the bond, you know, which would be about four hundred thousand a year. That's a twenty-year bond at eight million. I, I, I'm just throwing those numbers out there, I don't know if that's exactly what it would be, but, you know, if, if we have some good years, we could possibly pay that off. And it's a, it's a forty-year asset. Or could be longer, it just depends on how we're. So, you know, we have that energy, it's ours, it's, we don't, just like our hikers. And vehicles are paying for it.
Let's make it the longest continuous using, using natural gas.
Western, western city. A hundred years. Another thing I heard, okay, and say, well, that was really.
Hey, Senator Owens said tonight, thank you, thinking about water for two years, but. You know, uh, well, you, you know, the reason why, uh, going is we're. We have time, you know, also to natural gas products that, that we were invested with, even still that we can build as well. And. Right, I don't think so, but where we have entitlement of going forward with those other plans. And this is going to shape that peak, I think it's going to help us there. But if we, I mean, if our vote increases, you know, just like we've seen today. We, yeah, I want my kids to live here too, you know, start adding those loads and different things. Might be that possibility down the road. Six years for sure.
Any other questions, councilmembers? Looking for motion?
Motion would be saying yes to board, just means.
Say yes to, right.
Would be a job. For that or running through.
Second. Motion made by councilmember Gilson. All in favor?
Yes.
Moving on to item E, Ephraim City ordinance twenty-five dash oh six, city manager ordinance. We've, we've discussed this in length, uh, councilmembers, and, uh, I think we have language that we feel, all feel good about, and we were collaboratively with this. Katie and with one another. And so are there any questions about ordinance twenty-five dash oh six? Looking for motion?
Approve Ephraim City ordinance twenty-five oh six, city manager ordinance.
Second. Motion made by councilmember Murphell, second by councilmember Anderson, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to item F, Ephraim City resolution twenty-five dash oh nine, city manager contract. Uh, Katie has completed her, her, uh, probationary part of her employment with Ephraim City, she's done very well. Uh, we love what she's doing and what she's helping us with. And this just formalizes now her contract. So any questions, councilmembers regarding? Councilmember Witz. Council man, city manager, I'll get this straight.
I've been all of those things. Airport manager, right?
I make a motion that we. Approve Ephraim City resolution twenty-five dash oh nine, city manager contract with Katie Witz.
Motion made by councilmember Anderson, second by councilwoman Bill, all in favor? Moving on now to council reports. We're going to start with you, Dennis.
Great news, yesterday or the day before, perhaps you've heard it. We Jordan secured a two hundred thousand dollar grant, wow, outdoor recreation grant that, uh, we will use to, um, open up our football courts.
That will make the citizens cheer.
Yeah, they're already cheering, so that's exciting and of course Scandinavian days coming up. But you want to shift in the, in the welcome wagon, we call that thing a.
Information booth.
Information booth.
Also, there's a parade. And boys are going to be driving.
Is there going to be enough candy to throw at the kids?
We need to have a lot of candy, who's going to order the candy? Yes, it's, uh.
I almost volunteered, oops.
Sixteen lots.
Sixteen lots is a fifty-five, fifty-one? So, what are you talking about?
Or you, you, you use your own.
Do you, they're out.
There are certificies along the route, right? Fifty people going.
Thank you.
You got it right there. I was going to call this week. Cause unfortunately for, I will be in Disneyland that day, so sorry. My youngest, John, I have to go with me, have to.
You sounded like you were going to cry.
Yesterday.
It's, you know, their twins are turning five.
On that day?
On the seventeenth. Nothing that they would love more than.
Pass them on down.
He can do the welcome. He was eyeing the crown. That's okay. So that is. Yeah, for me, I hear that there's a, a new session in a couple of weeks. I'm not sure which day it is, but Senator Owens indicated like a couple of weeks, I need to go look at the calendar.
Thank you. Councilmember Terry?
What time is it? We didn't see it AM or PM.
Are you going to filibuster this?
Don't want to state.
Well, the water's kind of. Yeah, but, and I should ask Corey on the new day. Culinary high grill getting rebuilt, they're having to push the water. Different ways around the culinary high grill. So they are having a run well a little bit here in the area until that's fixed. Uh, they did have the bearing. And it was. Right, so they were supposed to get it this week, right? So, but. You know, the fortune of men. I mean, they're all really busy, they're really coming. I must have talked to Katie or Katie's talk. Never going on, but I think everything else is going good. I tried to make contact with the ambulance, so I. Go for that. I don't know if you're aware, utility ward is, uh, meaning quarterly unless they're needed. If something comes up, then they will schedule me. If there's nothing, so it will be me quarterly. And then if something comes up that they need to be, then we'll schedule me. Thank you, councilmember.
All right. I like you guys, I've seen a lot of you lately. And we guys have a little break. I love you from the morning.
Spent only ten hours together, twelve with tonight.
Twelve. We've had a lot, uh, but I, I do love each friend of order I serve, but it's many months ago. Parenting our kids and those types of things, but, um, you know, between ULZT and budget retreat, number one and budget retreat number two and city manager negotiations and also we've been here, we have been hanging out a lot. You know, Ralph Tech meeting is coming up, the library is a ray of sunshine in our city. They are just positive, great people. I went last time and Michael was saying the most outrageous thing, there's a, a painting on the wall, like an architectural rendering, where it shows the second building behind us, just to the west, the proposed future, the future. And it's from like nineteen eighty-six or something. Anyway, he reached out to the original architects and he's just, he just wants to know if they still have the blueprint. They're even in business or alive, but he hasn't heard back yet, but he, he thinks that would be just cool. If they say a couple of Titanic.
I met with her today, I met with her today. That, not the original architect, but the remodel.
Two kids on the block?
Do you know how many new?
Yeah, all my other daughters is interested in general. I don't pull up her for it, I'm just a ray of sunshine.
And a delight.
You guys deserve it, we needed to get it, but.
Katie and I met with Ferguson group last week. There, uh, there is a little bit of movement. Within our lease office, we created to frame some needs that Ephraim City has in a little bit of a covert way. Not in a earmarkish way. And boy, they snapped it up. And so Katie and I had a meeting on Friday with Senator Lee's office on a new, a new way of looking at our canyon. And, uh, we were sort of given some language and some ideas by the Ferguson group and it worked. We happened to be meeting with Senator Lee's, um, uh, area representative the next, well, I guess it was two days, no, it was the next day. And boy, it, we're excited. Um, we'll have an airport board meeting tomorrow. I have two applications for planning and zoning. Uh, is there a deadline on that campus? Did we put a deadline on it? Because I know other people who want to apply for those positions, but they haven't yet.
Oh, there's no deadline.
Okay, so I'm going to wait a little bit. They're, they had terms now, so they're mandated, and I don't know who it is, do you?
I don't know who it is.
Okay.
Megan told me people were leaving, but I didn't know who, which ones.
Megan's still online, do you want me to ask? Hey, Megan? Who are the planning and zoning commissioners who are rotating off?
So Jan Johnson has resigned. Um, and Steve Cornellson resigned a couple of months ago. So we're just looking to replace those two. So with Jan leaving as well, it kind of leaves us short, so, um, it'll be replacing Jan and then an alternate as well, so.
So have, we'll replace Jan and then we'll have an alternate?
Yes.
Okay. That was a question that I had. About the status of alternates. And do they get deboted? And how does that happen, stuff like that, so that's all I have.
All right, um, you know, we've, I echo what Anthony has said. We've seen a lot of each other and so everything I know, you know, so I have nothing to share at this time. Other than thank you for approving my contract, I appreciate it. We are streaming, keep that in mind.
It's about sharing.
Last weekend. He's going to plant her paws, it's coming.
Yes, I am.
It is, yeah.
Cause it is Mother's Day.
It's the culture of the.
We should. Close session.
Looking for motion? Motion made by councilor Bill, second by councilor.